2025 Meeting of the Oshkosh Municipal Council. If the deputy city clerk, please take the roll.
Spanbauer?
Here.
Flom?
Here.
Bilo?
Here.
Mookwauer?
Here. We're a little light on council. We're a little heavy on one side this evening over here. We will have -- invocation will be led by councilmember Spanbauer.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent?
Tonight, we have the privilege of having students from Valley Christian School here with us to help lead us in the pledge. Students, if you wouldn't mind meeting me down in front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nicely done. Thank you for being here tonight, helping lead us in the pledge. Family, thanks for bringing them. Taking a few minutes out of your night. It's much appreciated for you to do that and for them to be here. Again, I have a few students from Valley Christian. I have -- we have Miami, we have Carson, we have Noah, and we have Ryan. So maybe, teacher, favorite subject?
Hello, my name is Miami. My teacher is Mrs. Dix, and my favorite subject, probably recess.
Hi, my name is Carson. My teacher is Mrs. Jagarski. Favorite subject, gym and recess.
Hi, my name is Noah. My teacher is Mrs. Kraka. My favorite subject is recess.
Hi, my name is Ryan, and my teacher is Mrs. Bianciana. My favorite subject is recess.
There is nothing wrong with that being your favorite subject. Thank you again for being here tonight. There are plenty of good things learned during recess. We issued one proclamation in advance of tonight, celebrating the 25th anniversary of Ascension Mercy in their new campus over on the west side of town. We did that earlier as well. I have no one registered for any public statements tonight on non-agenda-related items, so we can move right to consent. I know we have a few people here. Before I do that, does anybody want to speak to us about anything and they haven't registered? They only have one person registered for something later. I want to make sure if you want that opportunity, that you have it. Excellent. We'll move right on. Consent agenda. I'll take a motion and a second for consent, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have no one registered on anything consent-related. I do need to remove number eight, Resolution 25-515, as well as number 17, Resolution 25-524. We'll remove those. Any comments or discussion on the remainder of consent? If not, when the clerk is ready, if you'll take the role on consent minus those two resolutions.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Resolution 25-515, approved budget amendment to police department's operating budget for technology upgrades. I'm going to move to lay this item over until the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to lay over? For those, anybody interested or listening, these two particular things need a supermajority. Basically, they need five yes votes to go through, and I'm doing math, and we don't get to five tonight. So we're going to lay these over until we have a sufficient quorum to pass those. If you'll take the role on laying over 25-515?
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Resolution 25-524, approve 2025 CIP budget amendment and approve cooperative purchase of service body from Monroe Truck Equipment for Water Utility Division. I'll move to lay this also over until the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Flom was the second. Any discussion on the motion to lay over? When you're ready, please take the role.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
All right, pending ordinances. We have ordinance 25-530, designate 20th Avenue and the east driveway of Trager School as traffic controlled intersection per Section 27A-7 of the Municipal Code. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I have a little -- is Mr. Collins?
He just ran out. Oh, no. Did you guys want to talk to that?
You do? Before I go, if I can have you come up to the microphone over here, and then if you could state your name and address, and keep it to five minutes, and the topic at hand. Welcome.
Thank you. We are Lisa and Mike Ably, 2950 West 20th Avenue. So we did speak previously with the other smaller council regarding this change. We are the next house located next to Carl Trager, and we do not want the light installed. We don't think that it's beneficial for the neighborhood. We simply don't want it. We spoke a lot about the reasonings why we don't like it and the idea behind it. I emailed you guys about that, and I got a response back that it sort of doesn't really matter how we feel. We don't come back with some proof necessarily as to the issues that we had with it. So I did some. Oh, we did some. First, we are very worried about the impact of our home's value being located right next to a traffic light, as well as the addition to a turning lane that with some of the pictures, I just got access to the stuff today. I didn't know I could access this. They're going right up to our driveway. So we are very concerned about the value of our home. I spoke to a local real estate agent who did some research on his own and then with another appraiser, and told us that we could expect an additional 2% to 5% could be adjusted downwards if the home is very close to the stoplight. I also have, and this is all available if I need to provide it, Vision Realty stated that idling cars, visual eyesore of a traffic light nearby can impact values of home. Realty Executives 2019 said even if it doesn't have high traffic, being close to a traffic light is annoying and can be a deterrent in a resale. Another issue we have is the pollution. Traffic lights are pollution hotspots. We Forum, partnering with WHO as well as Sustainability Meg.com, both say that drivers decelerating and stopping at lights and revving up to move quickly when they go green, peak particle concentration is found to be 29 times higher than that during free-flowing traffic. So we are concerned about as well the health of our family moving forward if this happens. And red lights can cause more accidents. And I know that the traffic survey is saying, no, it won't, but I found two different studies that state that lights decrease accident when there is a crash warrant being met. Those can decrease slightly, but traffic signals installed on the basis of an engineering study that resulted in a decrease of angle collisions with an increase in -- sorry, angle collisions with an increase in severe rear-end collision. So if the signal's being put in for reasons other than preventing those angle collisions, it can increase rear-end collisions. That's from the University of Kentucky, their engineering school, and that actually supports what Taddy -- I think it's Taddy is how you say it, the survey. Taddy says in their own report that it should decrease right-angle crashes, but rear-end crashes could increase by about 50%. So I find that them saying that this is going to reduce accidents would be misleading, and they even put in here that there has only been two accidents in the last five years. So this light isn't being installed to prevent crashes. It's being installed to get people into the school, which doesn't warrant a traffic light in terms of accident prevention, and could increase accidents because it's not actually addressing that issue. It's going to cause a new issue with rear-end collisions. Do you want to add?
Additionally, it seems they may have made a mistake when they surveyed the area. Lisa, I think you just pulled up an aerial shot of the Taddy's survey, which seems to include our house, seems to include our property in the, in what is listed and highlighted as the school's property. So it seems like that may need to be reviewed before proceeding.
I appreciate you coming up and speaking to us on this topic tonight. I really do. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak to us? I want to make sure that we have a chance. Okay. I think I had a motion and a second already. If I can re -- right?
Bilo was first, and Spanbauer was second.
Excellent. Council discussion on the -- I think I called for that. If anybody wants to go before me, you can, but this one might be just me, I think. Is there anybody from the, from Taddy or from the school district representatives? Maybe if I can direct my comments more towards you, because this isn't really city-related. Would whoever is representing the group mind coming on up and then giving your name and naming who you're here for and address?
Sure. John, you're brought to the traffic analysis design. You're the traffic effects study for the development.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight to try to help answer any questions and so, couple parts. I may kind of ramble, may jump around a little bit. I'm trying to, as I read through this whole thing, I'm actually trying to figure out what problem is attempting to be solved. But for any change, anything we want to do, we should try to solve a problem, and I'm trying to figure out what the exact problem is, because I think the solutions presented may solve some problem, but I don't know what it is. Can you tell me what we're looking to solve by changing the traffic pattern and putting a signalized intersection here?
Sure. Just give you some background. It's really for the pickup and drop-off time for parents and dropping off the kids in the morning, that big surge of traffic, as well as leaving. The problem is really leaving the site, the ability to turn left out of that driveway. They're experiencing long delays and long queues within the site, so it's impacting their operations for pickup and drop-off. We looked at several different options, looked at roundabouts, looking at having split driveways, but looking at those options, the traffic signal turned out to be the best option. The final reasons for one, from a cost standpoint and right-of-way standpoint, it fits the best at that location. Also, since it is put in for the school, it'll be basically dwelling green or green light mostly on 20th Avenue for in the middle of the day, for example, or when school is not in session. It won't be stopping traffic unnecessarily unless there's traffic on the side street. In other words, traffic leaving the school, then it'll be in operation for that peak surge time. So it's a situation where it'd be operational during that peak heavy surge time for traffic entering and exiting during pickup and drop-off, but during the middle of day and nighttime hours, it'd be dwelling green, basically free-flow traffic on 20th Avenue. So looked at also delay, which as mentioned previously regarding crashes. A couple of things to clarify in our report. We did say a couple of things regarding crashes. We said that based on DOT crash modification factors, a 34% reduction in right-angle crashes and a 14% reduction in all crashes is expected. Yes, rear crashes could increase by 50%, but overall, there'd be a 14% reduction in all crashes. So from a safety standpoint, it's a benefit as well as operationally regarding vehicle stopping and leaving. The impact is really during those peak hours.
Okay.
John, if I may add, my name is Mayor Constein with Bray Architects and the architect work with the school district. One of the other pieces that we're trying to solve is not only the queuing and the drop-off pickup, but actually the traffic at its kind of worst time is actually backing up onto 20th Avenue, and cars are stopped on 20th Avenue. So trying to create additional queuing length both on the site and then the additional turn lane helps people get off of the two main lanes on 20th Avenue. Right?
Mayor, if I could just add a couple of things.
Absolutely.
So this, two other things to note, which these gentlemen might bring up, but with the referendum that passed, there is an addition that's going to be added on to Trager, which is going to increase traffic volume at the school. So historically, the traffic at that site has been an issue since that school was built, and it has continued to be an issue. I know from the school district and my perspective, we get multiple calls every year from parents, new parents, but the issue it's trying to solve is that, which John talked about, but it has been an ongoing issue, which is expected to get worse, and that I know with the traffic signal warrants that they, Taddy looked at, it showed that it was borderline warrant in a signal, but with the additional traffic that it met the warrants for a traffic signal, which you could probably speak a little bit about.
Right, yeah. In addition to that, there is substantial traffic growth at 20th Avenue. We looked at historical traffic volumes on 20th Avenue for the past 20 years, and incrementally it's going up each year by about 2% per year. And as development grows to the west, that traffic only increase, which makes it more difficult for vehicles to exit onto 20th Avenue with, from the school, if there's no signal there at all.
Sure.
And the other thing I was going to add, and it also would help with bicycles and pedestrians, obviously, if you'd have a signalized intersection.
I'm going to jump around a little bit. Did anybody go out there and actually physically observe traffic? Like, not just put the, I don't know what those things are called on the ground where we stake them down and they do the counts, but?
Yeah, the rubber tubes, stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Did somebody actually go out and actually physically observe traffic pattern?
We did. Couple different ways. We also had video cameras mounted 30 feet in the air, looking down. So we did that throughout the parking lot at the intersections, as well as the pickup and drop-off points outside the school. In other words, box points, other areas, pickup, drop-off. So we measured pedestrian activity, bike activity, vehicle activity, delays and queues.
Okay. Did anybody in any way consult with, contact the business that is directly across the street from this project and the potential impact it has on their business? Does anybody from the school district representatives? I tend to not ask questions I don't know the answer to. I already know the answer to the question, so.
Okay. Not that I'm aware of, not at this point.
So that's a bit of a problem for me, because this is going to have an impact directly on their operation there. They already have cars that do go into their parking lot, and it creates a safety hazard within their space, and now we're going to purposely align an exit from the school into their, into their property. They don't want that, period. They just don't want it. I don't know if the plan was to have cameras or the sensors in the ground in terms of triggering, but you know, if they've got a red light out of their driveway, how are they going to, you know, how would they trigger that? But even still, they don't want this, but how would they trigger it?
Most likely there'd be a video detection camera, so if there are there, they're going to come light.
Reading through the analysis, comparing both scenarios, I'm looking at page 25 towards the bottom. For example, like scenario two could accept, operate acceptably without signals as traffic grows. It could warrant it in the future, right? We have a lot of could's there, and while I like the idea of them expanding their driveway ingress and egress into two lanes in, two lanes out, that could very much help. By the way, I live over here, so I'm very familiar with the space, have been for a number of years. I've got some great video of the school and the exit from there from numerous days, and there being very little backup. I just don't think it's warranted. But I do like the idea of two in and two out, and to try that before we stick several hundred thousand. I forget what it costs to signalize an intersection. Total cost install is probably?
Yeah. The school district was going to be paying this as part of the referendum, but you could probably speak to that better than I can.
I forget what the cost is for a signalized intersection right now.
Yes, that intersection's higher on 350,000.
And I appreciate that the school district's paying for it. The taxpayer doesn't care. The taxpayer's paying for it. So 350,000, that may not need to go into the ground right now. So if this doesn't pass tonight, that doesn't change the, what happens on their site in terms of ingress and egress. It only affects if we allow a stop-and-go light, a signalized intersection at that spot. Is that correct? I'm going to look over to the city side here. That would be correct. That's all that's in front of us.
So, yeah, the current ordinance is the approval to designate 20th and the entrance to the Carl Trager driveway as a signalized intersection.
Nothing with their construction project would not change anything. They can choose to still proceed however they'd want to within their site, given current approvals or future approvals. Is that fair? Additionally, I understand minimum expectations on notifications is pretty small. It's a couple hundred feet from the project sites. We do that all the time with plan commissions. This is one where it sure seemed like the entire school population should have been notified. I mean, the people who visit the school and drive to it go all the way over to the town of El Goma, right? Several miles down Oakwood. I think having their input would have been wise and not just my neighborhood, who happens to be very close to it. And there's also some other parts, too, that I don't need to get into about, I think, some other misses in terms of this, but I'm not going to support this tonight. I don't know if there's a path forward for this, and I'm going to leave it right there.
Mayor, may I?
Absolutely.
Yes, I mean, just on the part of communication, and I understand communication's a tricky situation. There were two different avenues offered in coordination with the city, as well as what the school district did offer. So right after the referendum passed, there was kind of an impromptu meeting held by the school district, which invited all families that attended Carl Trager to participate in that meeting. I think that meeting had, if I remember right, somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 attendees to that meeting. And then in coordination with the city, we did send out the notification, which you referenced as well. So inside both of those, we did invite the neighbor across the street to partake in some of those conversations. I can't say to how much further conversation went after that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you, Mayor, that I would have to double-check, but I'm fairly confident that they were noticed of the transportation committee from the city's standpoint. I'm not sure with the public meeting, but fairly confident they were noticed.
Okay. I think that's all I have. I've said enough. Councilmember Flom?
Going to keep it very brief. I'm also voting no on this. Personally, I think this is more of a solution looking for a problem, and with the business across the street and the home, I think there are better options for this, and it's not necessarily a present. I don't go down there as often as Mayor Mookwauer does. I don't live on this side of town. However, with the traffic patterns, over time, I just think this can lay off for now. So I don't think this is necessary. I think it's more of a problem than a solution at this time.
Anything else from council? Mr. Bilo?
I'll go real brief as well. I don't drive there very often. I was glad to hear that it was going to be green on 20th without cars interrupting. I think that's the right option there. Without seeing a better reason not to, I'm going to go with what our experts have recommended here. I will be voting in the affirmative on this one. I think it is something that, you know, the school asked to have this study done, and especially with them expanding. Government is always reactive. I understand that. Trying to solve a problem that we don't see yet, or maybe that all of us don't see, I think is, I think it's a good step to get out in front of it if it's going to get even worse. So I'll vote to approve, but that's my feelings on that.
Mr. Spanbauer?
I guess it's up to me. So I'm disheartened to hear that folks reached out and received some sort of communication that something doesn't matter, because I don't think that's the, certainly my feelings, or I think the feelings of many of the council members. Similar to Mayor Mookwauer, I often ask when presented with information, sort of like, what problem is this solving? And I guess it, I'm just not 100% sold that this is addressing a problem to the degree that perhaps it could. On the flip side, I do understand that the school district, you know, has studied this and investigated this and is looking for something to be done here. I also hear the concerns about just kind of the homeowners and the business across I'm leaning towards probably it's going to be a no for me on this one.
Okay. There's no further comment? City clerk, if you'll take the role on, what are we at? 25-530?
Spanbauer?
No.
Flom?
No.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
No.
Lost 03.
Next up, ordinance 25-531. Amend sections 2-19, 2-20, and create chapter two, article 7-1 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code, all pertaining to creation and enforcement of rules on city properties. If I can take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? I seen them. When you're ready, please take the role.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Ordinance 25-532. Amend section 2-10A of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code to remove the requirement that the annual council organizational meeting be held at 12 noon. Take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This doesn't mean we're not going to have a meeting. This means we're just going to make it more part of our normal flow and have it at a, probably the normal evening timeframe. If you'll take the role on 25-532.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Moving right along. Ordinance 25-533. Approval of speed limit change on Whitsel Avenue, County Highway E, to 30 miles an hour from Ohio Street to the city limits, and that would be to the west. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go right ahead, Mr. Flom.
I just want to thank the residents who reached out on this issue, provided us with information and got something going here, getting the ball rolling. A lot of the times, it takes, you know, citizens to bring up issues to us so that we can digest that information and recommend the policy change, and that is how the process works, and that is how that has worked here today. So just want to appreciate the residents who reached out on this issue and happy to see it here.
I will echo Councilmember Flom's statements. I'd prepared something similar to that. Had citizens not come to us on a Tuesday night and spoke to us, this wouldn't have changed, period. So not trying to toot our horn, that's not where this is coming from, but because of the action, because of them coming to us and speaking to us, something did change, and it went through a normal process. And I'm appreciative of them coming to us and bringing their concerns, staff responding to it, and getting brought to us in a relatively timely fashion as well. So very happy with the process, and I just, I hope it's a good sign that your government does listen to your concerns, and in this case, agreed, and we're making change, so. If you'll take the role on 25-533.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Ordinance 25-534. Approve amendment to chapter two, section 2-38 of the Oshkosh Municipal Code, reducing the size of the Business Improvement District Board. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Looks like you're wanting to?
If you would like to speak, you are more than welcome.
Sure, for sure. This one also flows very nicely into the next agenda item, which is a resolution. We've been working on this for quite some time. I know Lynn can attest a little bit more to the history, but basically, the bid is looking to move more towards a nonprofit status, which means not only is their budget changing to more contractual services, but they want to reduce in our, reduce the bid board size. In our ordinance, it does say that our bid board size is 13 members, and they would like to reduce it to seven with two alternates. We're very happy with that. I think it makes a lot of sense as they transition to this new process, and so we have the ordinance requesting the ordinance language change, as well as a resolution adjusting the members and their terms.
Appreciate them working that out amongst themselves on to who's coming off and in what terms they're staying, so.
Absolutely.
I was glad to not be a part of that part at all.
Even though it's coming from you.
Yes, correct. I'm glad that it got figured out amongst its board members, so. If there's nothing else on this one, we'll call the role on 25-534.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Mookwauer?
Aye.
Carried 40?
Resolution 25-535, this is to accept the resignations and adjust terms of bid board members.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 40?
We need you for a few more votes, so.
I'm working on it.
Stick around. Resolution 25-536, approve agreement for sale of Southwest Industrial Parkland to Kingsbury in the amount of $250,000. I do have Dan Wornicki?
Don?
Oh, excuse me. I can't read that. Don. I murdered your last name and I got one of those names, so please, I apologize. Say your last name for me.
Don Worzynski.
Worzynski.
Director of Manufacturing, Oshkosh, Division of Kingsbury. Here to answer any question.
Would you like to?
Well, I just have a brief introduction. Did we get to that point already? Okay, sorry. I missed it. Yes, this is Kingsbury. This is, we didn't have a motion, did we?
Not yet.
No.
Generally, he speaks first.
Okay. Well, I actually told Don that he didn't have to unless you guys had questions, so.
So moved.
Second.
There we go.
Okay, thanks, Don. Kingsbury is a project that we've been working on for a while with GOEDC. They were interested in some development in our Southwest Industrial Park. We're very excited that we were able to put this proposal together for them. In particular, they are taking, based off of the CSM, there's a native area within this parcel that we're creating for them, that they're excited to implement with their staff. And this is something that we feel can be a catalyst site as we work on new industrial development within the city. So we're very excited that this is moving forward and we're finally at the point where we can get it to you guys.
Go right ahead.
I'll use some of the few words I got left in me. I just wanted to say thank you to all involved. I know this was a process and I'm really pleased with the outcome and that you guys were able to get this to us.
I want to say thank you too as well. First, to Kingsbury. I appreciate you want to stick around and you want to call Oshkosh home for years to come and want to continue to develop here and increase employment and do all those great things. I happen to work out in that space, so I'm very excited to see some further development within that industrial park and to see what you guys can do with that site. So welcome to the Southwest Industrial Park and looking forward to everything you guys can bring into that space and your future growth. So as well as to our partners who help make it happen. These aren't always easy processes. Sometimes we take, sometimes you take one step forward and two steps back, but I hope it seems like you're ending in a great place and we love it that you keep on, that you want to keep calling Oshkosh home.
Absolutely. Appreciation from Kingsbury also through the help from the city and the OEDC was a long process, but everything went very well. We look forward to another 40 years in Oshkosh.
Good to hear. Just no other comments? If you'll take the roll on, oh, I apologize, I missed it. Mr. Flom?
Just same thing. Thank you for investing in Oshkosh. Thank you for continuing to call the city home and the people you employ here and your continued investment. It means a lot that we're a growing community, that we're a community that people want to work in and live in, and so thank you again.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, if you're ready, you can call the roll on 25-536?
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 40?
25-537, a resolution to approve amendments to TID 43 Development Agreements with Mill on Main for Phases 1, 2, and 3.
So moved.
Second.
Would you mind maybe just giving a brief background as to, we do these things kind of regularly where we have an agreement, we've got some dates, some targets that we're trying to meet, and then sometimes things happen. Have I teed you up enough on this one to swing away?
Sure, I feel like that's pretty much the summary of it. Mill on Main is working on completing their Phase 1. They're very close to completion with that. And with that progress means moving to Phase 2. We had a conversation with them where they submitted a letter to us letting us know that they didn't think they were going to be able to make some of those deadlines that we had originally put into the development agreements, and they requested an extension. We worked with them on some of the language because there were some minor modifications that need to be made, including some particular provisions that I'm going to gently softball to Lynn. If there are any extra questions concerning this, because I was not here when those were drafted, but the gist of it is there were deadlines for them to meet this development project, the buildings with. Building 1 needed to be completed, Building 2 had to be completed, and Building 3 had to be completed, all within specific timeframes. And they're asking to move Phase 2 and Phase 3's buildings' extensions out. This does impact this particular provision with a equity or a, what's the, how do, how do we word it in the amendment?
There was a penalty.
Yeah, basically, penalty.
Sorry. There was a penalty if they did not meet those. They're asking for an extension for seven, basically seven and a half months, pushing it forward from the original extension date and to not incur that penalty.
It wouldn't just be moving the extension dates. That's, it impacts that provision as well. So this is something that council needs to be aware of by allowing that. And staff is in support of this one. I think it makes sense based off of issues that, outside of their control, that they've experienced. However, I will gently point out, as is my role as a staff member, and you know I like to say this, there's extensions and then there's extensions. At this point, I feel like this is, we're laying it down. We're at the point where this is as comfortable as I am with allowing an extension with the seven and a half months from Mill on Main heading into Phase 2. If at some point they come to us in the future, I'm not saying that we wouldn't be open to a conversation, just that I would find it more difficult to suggest or recommend approving that extension.
Appreciate that recommendation. If there's nothing else, if you'll take the roll on 25-537?
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 40?
Resolution 25-538, accept a comprehensive energy plan from the Sustainability Advisory Board, and they recommend acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Spanbauer?
Just want to thank community development staff and really all the city staff who probably were subject of kind of some data requests. I think this comprehensive energy plan is really going to add some pieces that allow us to better have a more holistic understanding in view of our facilities, their energy consumption, what that costs us on an annual basis. I know I've had some discussion with a couple other city staff about ways that we can be more fiscally responsible with our dollars, and this lays out a plan to help beginning to address that. Yes, it also addresses things like citing solar potentially on some of our buildings, newer buildings where that makes sense, but it also allows us to look, again, more holistically at what are our old buildings, how much energy do they use, which ones should we invest in, what one kind of makes sense for a return on our investment, that kind of a thing. So kudos to staff for working on this. I think it's a step in the right direction.
If there's nothing else, if you'll take the roll on 25-538?
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 40?
Final resolution of the evening, 25-539, is to add a 24-hour timed permit parking option available through an app to the city's downtown parking lots, and the Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on 539? I don't see any. Take the roll on 25-539?
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 40?
Excellent. That concludes the action items for this evening. Moving into the council discussion, direction to city manager, as well as future agenda items. I don't think there's any discussion or direction to city manager. Future agenda items, meetings and workshops. So we just wrapped up budget workshop tonight. We still have some things that we need to hear and discuss and provide feedback on. I think Ms. Grill is going to be asking us, do we want to attempt to meet, it's on the calendar to meet tomorrow night from 5 to 7. It was an as-needed type meeting. She would like us to hear that information as relatively quickly as possible because you're expecting us to approve the CIP the next council meeting? Is that correct?
Yes, we're requesting that you would consider the CIP at that meeting. There's some grants that the state has open that are due on the 31st of October, actually probably November 1st, but we need to have approval of things to apply for the grants. They're the non-state grants that they have out there, so that's where the timing consideration comes in.
Quick poll, it was on our calendars, available tomorrow night to attend.
Yes.
There you go. If it's needed, so we will be here. Also, future meeting, the public hearing for the 2026 City of Oshkosh Operations Budget will occur on November the 4th in this room at 5:00 PM. That's a great chance for anybody to come and let us know what their thoughts are on our public, excuse me, on our operations budget. Staff, council will be here to hear those comments. No other agendas or meetings or workshop. Moving on to council member announcements and statements. I've got one, but if anybody else has an announcement or statement, they can go first if they've got any boards to report back from. Two things. First one, Jake, I don't know if you've got the, thank you very much, perfect. Boards, committees, and commissions, trying to make a strong push before the year end to fill the remaining boards, committees, and commission vacancies. We only have a few. In fact, Lorgani Finances will soon be filled. Do have some space on transportation and plan and landmarks. Current processes, we appoint alternates. That's the way I've been doing it, is alternates get appointed and then when an open seat fills, a full seat, when a full seat opens, I fill that with a, recommend to fill that with an alternate. Try not to jump people in terms of their seniority. Looking for a few people who have some interest in these particular topics. And if you would like to learn more or would like to apply, online is a great way to do it. You can also reach out to the executive assistant to the city manager, Kami, or you can email me. My email's out there on the web as well. But would very much appreciate a few residents of the City of Oshkosh who would like to serve their community. This is a great way to get to learn how government really works at the local level. And as a plug for anybody who is considering applying for an open vacancy up here, it is a great way to get on this council. Many of us up here have, and my past colleagues have served on a board or commission or multiple before running for election or be, or for, or before they were appointed to an open spot in the past. So great way to get involved in your community, as well as if you have aspirations. This is one way to start on those, on serving your community.
I was just gonna say, I've been lucky enough to serve on each of those, so if anybody has any questions on which ones are the most fun, they can feel free to reach out to me as well.
They are all fun.
All of them.
They were all fun. And then we do have a vacancy. I know it wasn't on here and we hadn't planned on talking about it, but I'm just gonna quickly, quickly talk about it. Councilmember Larson had submitted his resignation very recently. We do have a vacancy on council. Information's on our website in terms of how to apply, what that means, deadlines, what it takes to be considered, the valid information's out there on the city's website. There's a nice banner at the top. Click on it. It'll give you everything you need. And we'll be handling that part. Applications are due no later than 4:30 PM Wednesday, the 12th of November, and we will also then be considering those on the 25th, November the 25th agenda. We will have a presentation opportunity for every applicant, and then we will take the time to appoint someone that evening. So I want to thank Mr. Larson for his service, and I'm sure, I am positive, we will not be absent him long. He will find his ways to make sure we hear about the things he cares about. I am 100% confident in that. So with that, if not any more boards, council member announcements or statements. City manager, you've got a few before we go into a motion for closed session.
I don't know if there's any questions on the two professional service agreements listed on the council agenda. Otherwise, I was gonna provide information on the vacancies, so.
Did I beat you to it?
Yes.
Well, fill in the gap of whatever I missed.
You have to be 18, a U.S. citizen, resident of the city, and qualified to register to vote.
All right.
And we will be putting the applications as we get them. We'll be putting them online so people will be able to see them as we get them.
Okay.
I didn't have anything else.
Sounds good. I have, you got enough left in you to?
I can do it.
To say it? All right. I think council member Bealow has a motion.
Do you have to read the opening thing?
You know what?
Because it says mayor.
I do. Yeah, prior to receiving that motion, so tonight, council's going to, will consider going into closed session to discuss the potential purchase of a property commonly known as city center. Background information in relation to this closed session was provided in the council agenda packet. And for council, does anyone have any questions related to that background information that was provided prior to us going into closed session? I don't see anybody with any questions.
All right. I move that common council convene in the closed session pursuant to section 19.851E of the Wisconsin State Statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the potential redevelopment and/or acquisition of property located at 101 Commerce Street and 201 Pearl Avenue in the City of Oshkosh, commonly referred to as city center.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, if you'll take the roll on going into closed session.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 40?
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.